Talk about affordable housing. It's always gonna be affordable.
No.
Well, affordable housing in the state of South Dakota is now what, three hundred eighty-five thousand?
Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about. Current properties we have in. That, you know, I go in and I buy shit holes. And I rehab them, but the stuff that they make me do. It's so cost prohibitive to make it affordable to pass it on, because I just had an argument this week with, was A. I gotta put a concrete driveway in for off-street parking, which is fine. But the driveway, current driveway that is gravel. Overlaps the corner of the house by eighteen inches. I can't do it because it's.
Well, we better get to business, folks.
Yep. It's that time. So I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And was pledged allegiance to the clock.
Somebody moved their flags on us.
All right, roll call.
Hockler.
Here.
Graylow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Easy.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none.
Um, approve the agenda. Can we add a executive session for contractual? No need to amend that, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
It is for contractual.
Oh, yeah. Well, it just says executive sessions are necessary. Great. Okay, so there's a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any visitors to be heard?
Um, actually, I have something I'd like to share as a visitor to be heard. Um, unless we forget someone else likes to go first or welcome to.
We'll let you go first, just in case he wants to.
Oh, man.
Yes, no.
I might change my mind after.
That's all right. No, thank you. Good morning, Dr. Damon Elvey, Superintendent of Vermillion Schools. Just wanted to come and, and, and we'll say thank you again to, to the county for their work with us and well, lots of projects, but mainly our uh, school resource officer program. I see Sheriff Howell's here and I just wanted to basically, you know, once again, remind the council that that investment in our community is, is so appreciated. Uh, the city of Vermillion offers us an opportunity to have a deputy in, in our schools. Um, and of course, you guys provide us to have a deputy in our schools. And they do much more than just um, sit in an office and help protect our school, which naturally is an important aspect of the SRO program, but um, our, our resource officers are very active in our schools. They're providing their programming, they're going in and, and helping at uh, lunchroom programs. I mean, hanging out with kids and, and getting to be seen and heard and known in our, in our school district to offer the students an opportunity to see law enforcement as an asset and as a protector and as somebody they can trust. So I think that's, that starts at a very young age and I think our, our resource officers do a great job of that. Uh, but they also help with all of our safety planning. You know, uh, that in our district, we do a lot of threat assessments and planning for uh, unfortunate events, whether it's just things such as, you know, severe weather or in a building evacuation or you know, we have an electrical problem. We have to suddenly move a thousand kids to a different location. Or heaven forbid, if it's a, a tragic uh, scene at a, at a school for some reason. Uh, those folks are there and they're helping plan that. Every year we have uh, live and tabletop exercises in our buildings that you guys help support. And uh, so I'm just here to just again, say thank you for that. Uh, the SRO program is alive and well in Vermillion and, and I know very much appreciated. Uh, along with that, I also want to thank all the guys and gals that work and help keep the, the county roads well maintained because uh, our buses travel a lot of traffic out on the gravel roads and, and the fact that you guys keep them maintained and more importantly, in the winter time, keep them open for us is, is, is a needed necessity as well. And uh, in South Dakota, you can't predict the weather very well, but uh, we always get to school on a safe and, and traveled highway or county road, which we appreciate. So just wanted to take a moment to think, once again, it's the fall of the year. We're off to a great start and wanted to make sure I got a chance to, to share our appreciation to the council for all the efforts that you've provided for the Vermillion School District. So. Anything you, questions or anything you need of me? Otherwise, just wanted to say that and I'll get out of your hair.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate it.
Um. Uh, so I had a, a good, good experience at the county convention in Rapid City and uh, part of one discussion that I had uh, with our neighboring county was regarding uh, so uh, SDCL eleven nineteen fifteen uh, allows counties to uh, uh, charge administrative costs for tips within their uh, their jurisdiction. Um, Yankton County has passed a resolution to that effect. Um, and uh, it seems like a good resolution and something that uh, I'd like to consider it at a few future meeting, but just something to, to put out there for you. Um, I'll email this around to the other commissioners so that uh, so that you guys can, can review what, what they have passed over in Yankton and see if something's might be uh, might be useful here. So.
Great. Thank you. Um, hmm. All right, so uh, guess Rod, Rod's not here.
Rod is um, not feeling well today, so.
Okay.
He was going to try to zoom in. I don't see him on there, though.
Nope. All right then, should we uh, maybe we can just table this?
No, it's for ditch board. It's just two invoices.
Oh, it's just, okay, okay.
So I'll make a motion to go on the ditch board.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're in ditch board.
Thank you. Uh, invoice from complete excavation. Let's see, for fourteen forty-five, and this one is on lateral fifty. Or fifty A, I think. Which is, you wanna do them separate? You wanna do them together?
I think we could probably do them together.
Feel comfortable with that.
Yep.
They're all for the same type of thing, just in slightly different locations.
Yep, and the other one is for twenty-eight forty-five.
I move to payer bills. A second.
There were three more, yeah? I saw, so, so there was, there were a total of five invoices.
Sorry.
Um, and uh.
I didn't go for it.
Yeah.
In looking at it, it looked like their equipment and man costs were really quite reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
It's pretty expensive dirt. Thirty bucks a yard.
So I have a motion in a second to pay the five invoices. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion passes. Anything else for ditch board?
It looked like there was also a bill from the Clay County Commission for culvert. That. Um.
This one for the highway department.
Yeah, yeah, the highway department for a couple of culverts.
Uh huh.
That would be builder.
Like two A.
And bill to the ditch board.
Yeah, lateral one B.
And lateral fifty.
Fifty A.
And there was one more, two.
Oh, I have three.
Two A.
Yeah, two A, fifty A, and one D.
Now, these are the ones we already talked about, I think.
These were the culverts that went with the dirt, the work that complete excavation did.
Correct, yeah.
So this is the county.
This is the county billing the ditch.
The highway department billing the ditch board, yeah.
Right. Move to approve those.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion passes.
Right.
So I think that's everything.
Yep.
Move to come out of ditch board?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion passes.
Okay, um, so Drew. We've got the second reading of the zoning ordinance amendment for mobile and manufactured homes.
Uh, this is Michael here. I think we are ten, five minutes early on that.
Oh, okay.
We can do the welfare cases.
Yeah. So we've got uh, welfare requests, two of them for funeral assistance.
Yeah, uh, the first one, uh, one four dash zero thirteen. This was pretty straightforward. Uh, didn't have any assets, any family. Um. And no real income or assets. That one's pretty straightforward.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then you got another one.
Yep, this next one is a mess. Um. Uh, the deceased was the child of uh, President Clay County. Uh, after the, the deceased passed, the parents after the funeral just left down. And uh, both him and his wife are in uh, tough shape. Uh, low functioning, I think is a polite way to say it. And uh, yeah, just left the funeral home with the bill. Technically, they qualify. They do not qualify for aid in this case, but the funeral home was left with the bill. And they're in very, and even if we did go after them, if we had another mechanism, it would probably be a real detriment to that family to uh, try to collect the assets.
You noted that there are also, that there are a vet with PTSD.
Yeah, and that, yeah, I've worked with him in the past and yeah, so it's a he doesn't qualify, but the funeral home's holding the bill here, so that's where we're at on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Kind of. For that discussion too, we're gonna have about seventy-six hundred probably this year for uh, funeral assistance, which is on our high end. But overall, we're spending about, last two years, we spent, us three years, we spent just over seven thousand on medical. And before that, we were spending about twenty-two to twenty-three thousand a year. So our, our average has been down significantly.
Because when you put those two together, yeah.
Yeah, with a very Stanford, not something after us for their ability.
Well, and for conversations with Yankton County, we're lucky there.
Yes, I think on the average, our medical is usually, yeah, right now it's dropped down to nineteen total. But I think for other counties, even in this area, it's hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. Yeah.
Pretty awesome, yeah.
All right. So we just got a few more minutes um, before it's nine fifteen, which is the scheduled time for the second reading.
Should we consider vouchers?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Um. So if we go down, down the list and we look at vouchers, um, is there a motion to approve?
Was there a follow-up? I didn't see, I, 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 I didn't see one, so.
No.
Okay.
No.
Then, yep, then I move to approve the vouchers that we invited.
Exactly.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to approve vouchers. My one question is that um, there's one note there for Scott Vincent Persig. And it's a little over fifteen thousand dollars. It said August twenty-four uh, EXC slash skid clear bridge. Um, and it included three hundred ten dollars in tax and I couldn't quite figure that one out.
That was excise tax. We still have to pay contractors' excise tax. We just don't pay sales tax. I figured that out myself to make sure it was the right percentage.
Wow. And, and what was, what was it for? I was trying to figure out.
That I didn't look super close at. Rod approves all the bills before they come to me, so um, be a great question for him, but.
Where was that one at?
Yeah, that, it, I, I mean, that was, I think, what stopped me was that it, it, first, it's a name I, I didn't recognize.
You said it was for fifteen thousand?
It was over fifteen thousand, yeah.
Okay.
I think it was on page four. Maybe. But I, I, you know, August twenty-fourth and the name, I couldn't connect it to a company we work with. It was just.
Scott, is it Persing?
Yeah.
Backhoe Service.
Oh, is it? Okay.
We've done, we've done business with them.
Okay, okay. That was just, uh, you know, it was just random. I couldn't figure it out, so I thought I'd ask.
This, I didn't see Craig Thompson's in here. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Yes, she was gonna add that yesterday.
I think, I think that's in there, in the last. It, it's in the la, the, the uh, the last one that came.
The last.
Uh, the last version.
Was there another version after the one that came out last week?
There was a final version.
I got one on Friday.
Look at my sent messages.
And I didn't get any more vouchers since Friday.
Oh, yeah, the vouchers all came Friday. I thought I saw Craig Thompson on it.
Yeah, that was one. Yeah. Yes, for abuse and neglect, though.
Hmm.
There's another one for the jail.
Okay, that's not in there?
Yeah.
Let me see if I can have her run another list and send you guys a follow-up, just to make sure. I sent it out, but I don't see it in my, in my sent box, so. I don't see it in my drafts either. I must not have.
We can approve that next Tuesday, though, right?
Yeah.
And if anybody has any concerns about the Percy one or want more info for Rod, you know, I could have made my motion to approve all but that one and we could.
I'm com, I'm comfortable. As long as he's a known contractor, I'm good with it. Uh, you know, I, I just didn't recognize the name as a contractor we did business with, so.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, um, any further discussion on vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now at time nine fifteen, so uh, this is the second reading of the zoning ordinance amendment for mobile manufactured homes. Was there anybody who'd like to be heard? Right then. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
So motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
So I'd like to offer a little discussion. Um, so I voiced a few concerns about this at the last one, just about whether it was targeted narrowly enough or whether it might unduly um, remove property rights that some of our, our county residents currently have. Um, I had a couple of follow-up conversations, um, one with a couple that owns quite a few trailers out in the county. Um, kind of talked about various condition of the trailers that they have at their locations and what their thoughts were about the language of this and whether they'd have any concerns or whether they might purchase a trailer from town that was from two thousand if it was good and not if it wasn't allowed. And uh, they, they did say that in their experience that maintenance makes a big difference and uh, you know, a trailer, they've seen trailers that are, you know, twenty-five, thirty years old that are in better condition than others that are fifteen years old. So um, I continue to try to think about um, a mechanism that we could use that wouldn't unduly burden your office, um, but could just provide a little bit of a, a window of daylight where somebody who is in that situation, they've taken really good trailer, their counter, their trailer, they maybe live in Vermillion and their park's getting closed down and they wanna sell it to somebody out in the county. Um. I uh, contacted the uh, city building inspector office, both to ask them about, you know, HUD code updates over the years and uh, what their thoughts were, whether, you know, I was, you know, overly concerned about something that wasn't a big deal. Um, and uh, in that conversation uh, with, with Alex Goodburn in the permitting office there, that uh, he agreed that he would be willing uh, to, you know, if we added, if we amended this to add um, no, let's see, so structure shall have been constructed within the last twenty years according to listed data manufacturer and/or have received a favorable recommendation that it is in good repair and up to current HUD standards um, by the city uh, building official. Um, and he, you know, based on your comments last time, it sounded like we're only talking about maybe three or four of these years, something like that.
Not even.
Not even that many. So um, he said that that wouldn't be an undue amount of work for his office, um, and that he'd be comfortable uh, comfortable with that if that was something that we uh, that we felt was, was appropriate. So um, that would be, that would be the one thing that I would ask. I think that um, I just want to uh, I wouldn't want to to create a rule that's just going to, you know, inadvertently uh, harm people without uh, without having uh, without achieving the goal, you know, so if if that, uh, if somebody was in that situation, I think that they would be harmed and it would not be uh, uh, furthering the county's interests. Uh, if they'd say they had a twenty-five-year-old trailer, kept it in great shape, they could prove that to the building inspector. Um, to me, that would be uh, that seems like that would be uh, appropriate. So that's uh, that's my one comment to share, so.
Yeah, no, I'll just say, I, I like that idea a lot. Um, and uh, I, I think it would be very workable. It wouldn't be a, a lot, a lot more work. My biggest concern about this addition is that you know, if, if, if this amendment fits into a category um, of exclusionary zoning. Um, and who it excludes are people who don't have enough money to buy a brand-new trailer. Um, or who are able to afford maybe lease on a on land, um, but they can't uh, you know, and, and they can afford a used trailer, but they couldn't afford a new one. Right? So I think there's the property right problem, but it's also that we are excluding um, you know, from the ability to have a home. Um, you know, a, a a fair number of people who really, really need one. So, you know, manufactured housing and mobile homes are uh, you know, in this age of what we, we call an affordable home, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, oh, um, uh, hmm, you know, on a I don't know, even a middle-class wage, young people can't afford places to live. And this sort of cuts out a lot more housing. Um, but I think the exclusion that uh, or the, the um, amendment to the amendment that Jeffrey's talking about would really solve the problem and save, save the ordinance. Um, I, you know, as, as it is right now, I I can't vote for it. We are desperate in this county. You know, we're, we've got a, a very high, we have one of the highest poverty rates in the state. Um, and we, we, we got people living on the street. We, we've got people going to the Salvation Army. Um, uh, you know, just, just looking for a roof over their head when it snows because it's too cold to sleep outside. So I would hate to bar um, people who are just barely making it. Um, and you know, again, you say there's only a few a year. And so it's a small number of cases we're looking at, but it's a big impact on that small number of cases. So I, I, I would favor Jeffrey's amendment. I'm, I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad you got that.
So I would think Dave made the mo, or made the comment at the last meeting that the, the demographics you're talking about, this, this isn't even affordable for them. Moving out into the country. Buying something to put on a lot or even renting a lot, which I'm, I would have a hard time finding a place where somebody's renting a trailer house in the county. If they're moving it out there, it, it costs a lot to buy that lot. I mean, if we're, if we're breaking off a shelter belt, we're I mean, shelter belts alone on two acres are two hundred thousand dollars in the county. So I don't see anybody moving a trailer house.
But it's not three eighty-five.
Well, and I'm just talking a lot.
Yeah.
So, and there's no septic, there's no water, there's nothing there yet.
I, I, I think that uh, you know, my thoughts on it would be that I agree that it's, that somebody's not gonna go and buy a parcel in the county and then you know, put in a septic system and then, but, but I do think that, I, I know of people that are renting trailers out in the county and some of those aren't in great repair. And so I could see this potentially being um, important for a property owner that owns that, but maybe doesn't have a whole lot of you know, deep pockets. They might have wealth because they own that, that land, but it's locked up in the land. And maybe they've got a trailer from the sixties on the property and they wanna replace it, but they couldn't necessarily buy one that's ten years old, but maybe they could buy one from somebody in town that is twenty-five years old, if it's in good repair and move it out there. So it's just, I could see, I could see that dynamic happening at a few places out in the country, and I think it would be desirable to have the possibility to have something slightly older than twenty years. So I think that that, that's how I would see that happening potentially is um, yeah, something like that where, you know, the landowner would be, you know, they might not have real deep pockets, but they might be able to afford a little bit older one, uh, and that might make things work a little bit easier and then allow them to keep the rent lower for whoever's renting their, their trailer out there. So.
I see more downside out doing that than the one or two that are gonna fit in that box that you're describing.
Yeah.
I think there's more downside than upside.
What, what do you see as downside?
Yeah.
You're gonna move, there's gonna be people who move up. Just say it's in great shape today. It doesn't take very long for a trailer house to be it is, it's, it's any property. I mean, if you don't take care of it.
Yeah.
But a trailer house falls apart way faster than a regular house. And we don't want those falling apart all over the county.
And this would be, I think, more stringent than I think the city regulation. I think the city regulation currently allows.
But we're gonna, you wanna inspect it once, park it in the county, we never look at it again.
Yeah.
That's my problem.
And we don't have an inspection program.
No.
No.
Uh, this last weekend, I took, I was lucky enough to have an opportunity to visit with the guys that uh, builds uh, motorhomes. And he pointed out that uh, mobile homes, you know, the manufactured homes are made to move once. So yes, they've got a frame on it, as you pointed out last time. Uh, but uh, even just moving it that once, they're, they're really not built to withstand uh, time. They're, they're meant to be depreciated out. And the twen, uh, one of the reasons we came up with twenty years is that uh, it isn't an off, on-off switch whether you're gonna buy a new one. By twenty, twenty years, most of these mobile homes have depreciated by fifty, seventy-five percent, depending on what condition they're in or, or more. So your idea of shutting them out is, isn't really valid. Uh, the other point is, is that this keeps it simple, so that folks that would wanna buy one, they look at the code and they go, well, twenty years, okay, let's, let's look for a different one. We'll find another one that's, that's good. Uh, you're talking to a guy that's actually owned two mobile homes. I moved one from Sioux City to Vermillion and then made a profit on it here because it was worth more in Vermillion in our housing market than it wasn't in Sioux City. Now, we're talking like forty years ago, but, well, fifty years ago. But the, but the situation still stays the same. We're not uh, by shutting off at twenty, what we're doing is, is uh, making the, at least that person is gonna balance that purchase price versus the development costs that, that Davis pointed out. And many of them are gonna probably make a bad decision. Uh, if they're gonna put a, an old trailer home on, like I did, the first one. I put it on a piece of rural property. And then I walked away from it. It was there for somebody else to dispose of, tow it to the, well, put some wheels on it. They had actually mowed it and take it to the landfill. The second one was brought here into Vermillion and it was uh, it was sold. It's no longer there. I assume that it's been taken off to the landfill. But, so I, you know, I'm speaking with some experience about working, buying old motor, uh, mobile homes uh, or manufactured homes. And then uh, uh, experiencing what it's like to own those because it's, it's not a an asset that like a stick-built house in town is going to usually retain its uh, uh, value pretty, pretty flat until the bitter end. Uh, these will depreciate over time. And they're, uh, they can become unsafe to live in, and I'd rather not have that uh, look back on, on a situation where somebody uh, is getting into a bad situation fiscally because, because they're buying something that isn't isn't going to be a long-term asset. Yeah, or it could be a, a danger to them.
Well, and I, I think that my primary, my primary concern, the, the constituents that I feel would be potentially most negatively I could, uh, impacted by this would be those that, that own a trailer currently, but are going to, are forced for some reason to move it off of a lot within the county and then don't have an additional, don't have somewhere else to put it. So say we've got a, we've got several lots and uh, trailer parks in Vermillion that I could see potentially closing in the next ten, twenty years, you know, as, as development continues. And so my concern is, is the, the value that although it's depreciated from its purchase price, they still, if they, if it's possible to sell that, if they've kept it in good shape, good enough that they can convince the building inspector that it's in good repair and meets current HUD standards. I think that current HUD standards should guarantee that it's safe currently, that they have something now that they could sell right now to somebody, maybe for ten thousand dollars, maybe for fifteen thousand dollars, something like that. And that, and that if we pass this, then that, that value goes to zero. So to me, it's, it's a concern about and that likely someone who owns one of those units, um, it, you know, could well be somebody who's at the, the lower end of our, our, our income and wealth uh, scale. So, so I just worry about that.
I don't see the value going to zero. There's, there's. I don't see the value going to zero. There's, there's, they'll still have a, something, if it's still worth having, it's, it's a ten thousand dollars that they can sell for. Selling it out into the country is only one of other options. It's not as if that asset goes to zero because you could always move it to a different trailer park. You could move it out of county. There's, uh, it isn't as if that's, uh, an on-off switch of, you happen to own something in town, you wanna get rid of it, it's worth ten K. If you, uh, if you can't move it into the county, you, you're stuck with it. That isn't the case.
Okay.
Well, you know, and we're talking about maybe a once, once, uh, uh, a decade instance is what you're thinking about. Or maybe once every two decades.
Yeah, but, but at that moment, you might have many units that meet that standard. I mean, you might have twenty units in a park and that park closes. And so it, it could just happen once, but it could impact quite a few people when that occurred.
Well, true, and Dick, correct me if wrong, but area, area other cities and counties and towns. I hear, what I've talked to, they've gone to ten years.
In some cases, yeah.
So.
I, mini haha.
Mini hahas done that. McCook Lake is that way.
Sure.
Um, cause I got a phone call on that one this last week.
Sure.
Cause of the flooding and stuff down there, people looking for housing up here and stuff. And my other concern about your inspection thing. Is what if somebody goes and buys a trailer in Yankton? Who's gonna inspect that? Our city guy's not gonna inspect that. Who's gonna inspect that? Who's gonna approve that?
Yeah, well.
We don't have an inspection.
And, and if he just says, I'm not traveling the Yank for this, well, then you don't have, you don't have a letter of recommendation from the city of Vermillion's building inspector.
I, I don't want the city recommending stuff for the county. That's, that's.
Yeah, and if we're uncomfortable with that, to me, it seemed like a way to potentially leverage another, another office that's being paid by a different entity.
By all means, I'm, I'll, we have a shortage of affordable housing. I'll advocate for affordable housing every day, but. And I've worked for Vermillion Housing for twenty years now. In twenty years, I've never had anybody live in a trailer in the county that's been affordable, that qualifies for housing. So. It's not on my radar.
I don't know if this will help or hurt, but I've been running a few numbers while you were discussing and I figured I'd add to the conversation with that. We currently have six hundred and fifty-two mobile homes in the county. Of those six hundred and fifty-two mobile homes, five hundred and thirty-one of them are older than two thousand four. We only have one hundred and twenty-one that are newer than two thousand four. So. Do the math with that as you will. I just wanna bring to your attention that in the last few years, most of the. Older mobile homes out in the county that are selling. It's a lot. So we've got one from nineteen seventy-two, fully remodeled in two thousand nine, sold for two hundred and twenty-three thousand. On less than ten acres. So. Trailer house. Dave sold it. He could tell you more. I also want to bring to your attention that of those. Of all of those mobile homes, those six hundred and fifty-two mobile homes, only eight of them have a remodel year that's effective newer than two thousand four. Or remodel year in general. So as far as people remodeling mobile homes. Has, has we've been saying lately about old buildings, you can only put so much lipstick on a pig. So the fact that only eight of them have remodel years is pretty. Important, I think. Those are the numbers that I thought maybe may add to your discussion. Did you guys have any other questions for me?
Six hundred, you said six hundred and fifty, right? That includes what's in the city.
Yes, that's countywide. That's the quickest way I could run it. So. And then our oldest ones, I think, are in the nineteen fifties and all of those are on, on the river. So.
Yeah, a lot of mobile homes on the river, a lot.
And, and it, and, uh, it, to cite a mobile home in the county, you need a conditional use permit. There's no areas where it's permitted use. Is that correct?
Thanks for the help.
Thank you, Linnaean. Data helps, yeah. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause that was part of my thinking as well, was that if a person, a person's already gonna have to be jumping through the hoops of, of a conditional use permit if they're doing this. So it didn't seem like a huge additional step potentially to, to visit with the building inspector and have that to it.
So we're differentiating ones that would be moved out of Vermillion versus moved from El Point to. Irene outside of the county or from Yankton or wherever. So.
My, my primary concern is, is the, is Clay County residents and, and the values of their properties, so.
But it sounds like you would need a conditional use permit if you wanted to move a mobile home from one site to another.
But the problem is if we have the city do the inspection.
Yeah.
Like Dick said, if it's, comes out of Beersford, Irene, Yankton, El Point. And the city won't do the inspection for us. We can't compel another government agency to do something on our behalf when it comes to conditional use permits. So we can't deny the conditional use permit then. Based on it's too old.
Well, because I think we should have an or in there, you know, I mean, I think that if you, if you have not received the recommendation of a building inspector and it's older than twenty years old. You know, you didn't meet either of the things. So I think, you know, that, that seems.
Yeah, but they're gonna be like, how do I, I mean, you're allowing other people to have a building inspector. How do I get?
A CUP, approving one CUP has no bearing on approving any further CUPs. That's in the ordinance. So if we've, if we approved one and somebody else comes and says, my situation is exactly the same as this.
But I can't get a building inspector. You're allowing people in, in the city of Vermillion to have a building inspector. Cause I don't, maybe the city will do it for free. I highly doubt it. But then you're excluding, I mean, how do you? How do you tell this other person, well, no, your trailer doesn't qualify because the city won't inspect it?
Well.
And if there's an issue and they have a complaint, are they coming after the city or are they coming after us? But the city would deny it.
No.
And they're not happy. So who's, who's ultimately responsible? Cause the city's acting on our behalf, correct? Yeah, and that's not. That doesn't work. That's what concerns me is I don't want the city doing work on our behalf. I don't know if the city would have allowed that.
And you feel it would be too much of a burden on you to potentially go and look at a trailer and?
I don't think it's a burden for me. I just don't have the. Qualifications or the certifications to do that.
You have to be licensed and say yourself, call the inspector.
Yeah.
That's a very rigorous.
I'm licensed.
Yeah.
You have to maintain it.
So you, really, I, I feel like I'm looking out for those people on the lower end of the, the scale.
To try to ensure that they have.
Yes. Cause I've been there.
Yeah, but the trailers you were talking out, I mean, uh, would not currently be allowed under our ordinance. They are, they were, yeah. So, so, and my understanding is that was a lar- a major change in the federal regulations in seventy-six, so.
In mine, mine, uh, mine, I kept up really quite well. I re, redid a lot of stuff myself on the, on the newer one. On the older one. I couldn't afford to keep it up. I could barely afford to buy it for eight hundred dollars. And, uh, so I was in, in college at the time and, uh. There's risks I took that I think were foolish. And I wouldn't wanna put somebody else in that same, same position. This is written. Puts, puts the potential move, potential purchase. In the. Puts everybody pretty much in the more repairable, more, uh, less depreciated out, less, less, uh. Earlier in its, in its useful life. I think the, uh, uh, it's still got some useful life typically at twenty years. Uh, even when they're well-maintained, you know, they're at fifty percent useful life probably or, or, or further. And so to keep it simple. Keep it so that we're not differentiating between things that are coming from out of county versus in county. Uh, I think it's best to keep it simple here. And speaking from experience, from personal experience.
It's a hard one. This is a really, really hard one.
It's, it is hard. It's also, you know, Dick said, you know. I feel we're somewhat protecting, you know. The lower-income people that would challenge us, you know, if they rented, obviously. Personal experience, renters don't take care of property as well as if you own it. If you own it, it's not particularly for somebody that struggles to begin with. It's not a good investment, you know, because it's gonna.
It depreciates.
It's not a good investment.
I would have been smarter to rent than to buy my eight hundred dollar trailer, let's put it that way. I only had eight hundred to lose, you know, if it, if it burned down, but it was a lot more likely to burn down, frankly. And, uh, I wouldn't wanna put someone else in that risk. You know, at the time even, I was, uh. I had an active farm business. I was fairly handy, so I could do a lot of things myself. But, uh, typical person probably couldn't. And would be more at risk and just ignore problems. So, I. So like I say, I feel like I'm protecting those interests of folks, uh, perhaps more than. You, you want to and are trying to.
I think a, a response to that that I would have is that, well, what about the individual that is renting a trailer in the county that is from nineteen sixty? And is a very unsafe trailer like you're talking about. And the property owner could replace it with one from nineteen ninety and it'd be a fair sight better than the nineteen sixty-one. But they couldn't afford to replace it with one that was built in twenty fifteen. Like, is that, I mean, it, that also seems to be. A potential impact here. You might have landowners saying, well, you know, anything I'm gonna replace this with is, is gonna be too expensive for me. So I'm gonna let it just, just rot into the ground before I replace that with anything. Cause I can't, I can't afford getting a twenty fifteen unit in here. You know, I'm not going to the map for this. I, I, I don't feel like it's gonna impact a whole lot of people. I feel like it could be a, a severe impact. I can imagine people where it'd be a severe impact on. And so that's why I've spent some time on this one trying to, to work it. But, you know, I know how I'm gonna vote on it, but, uh, you know, I'm not, not gonna spend the whole day.
No, and I appreciate that information you've provided, but the schematics of the whole city involvement is just, it's not working.
It was the, the best, uh, best brainstorm idea I could come up with that didn't require additional resources from the county, so.
Are we ready to vote? There is no further discussion then. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
With an ordinance, we have to do a roll call vote.
Oh, a roll call vote, okay. Thank you, Carrie.
Yes.
Easy.
Yes.
Yes.
Very low.
No. Yes.
Alright. And thank you for.
Yeah.
A really good discussion. I appreciate it.
You all made good points.
Yeah, thank you.
Andy. We've got patrol car bid specs.
Yeah, I wanted to. Get, uh, moving on the bid specs. As you recall, we've had some issues these last few years getting our cars ordered and delivered. I'm still not out of the woods on that yet, but, um. We're getting there. But I wanna get, um, get advertised and, uh, get ready to open bids on a twenty sixteen. And, or no, correction on that, I'm looking at. Uh, other notes, twenty twenty-five, uh, patrol car. Uh, basically my specs are the same as we've had in the past. Um, the Dodge Durango would, would meet these specs as well as the Ford Explorer. We have a state bid contract available from Lamb Motors for a Ford and, uh. Uh, Wagner Auto for a Dodge. So the, and then in addition to that, we typically would get bids from, um, Vermillion Ford. As well as, uh, there's a, a company in Fergus Falls, Minnesota that they'll, they'll probably bid as well. So. At this point, we just need to approve the specs and move forward to open bids and carry it as a date set.
And the, um, the bid opening date there is October first, so you might need to change that.
We actually, since Andy wanted to get going on it, um, we actually put out the advertisement.
Oh, great.
That, you know, if for some reason you didn't approve the specs, we would just move, you know, with the date re-advertised. But since they were the same specs we've been using. The two of us figured it was a safe thing. So glad and get it out there.
Alright, so.
To approve the specs.
I should, I should mention that I, the way I drafted it, we have, we're trading in the outgoing car. That typically works in the past when we go local. If it, if, um, we find a favorable bid that doesn't involve the trade-in such as going to state bid, then we would just surplus it.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just out of curiosity, Andy, is there any, do the guys like the Explorer over the Durango or?
They like the Explorers better. Durangos are compact on the interior. The bigger guys are crowded in there. We've got one of the three Durangos we have now is, has been over at, uh, the Dodge dealership in, in Yankton for over a month. Uh, with a warranty issue in the computer and, uh. So we're not happy with that. The other one that came in roughly the same time as that one's on the road doing great. And then the, the third one is, we should get it back, uh, tomorrow. With, uh, the equipment installed and should have that one on the road pretty soon. But I've, I've driven them. They drive nice. They're a good car. Uh, I think the only, uh, problem we've had is that they're just a bit smaller. And then the, um, the other thing is, when we bought those, if you recall, we're kind of in a crisis where Ford had actually canceled our, our order. And then wouldn't bid the next one. So we just went straight to the state bid specs and ordered them. So they didn't come with a spotlight. We had to have that installed and it also didn't come with the remote start that we've been adding in. So it didn't completely meet our specs, but we've got that in here now.
Alright. Well, thank you.
The surplus of, yeah, patrol car.
Oh.
Do we do that now or should we wait?
Oh, I.
This is a different car.
Oh, this is a different car.
Yep. I don't wanna surplus the twenty sixteen right now. Well, it is a twenty sixteen, but the car that's outgoing next year, when the, the one we just approved. Would come in, that's a different car.
Okay.
We have the, the, uh, two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer that, um, we're replacing with the Dodge Durango that's in the shop right now. This, this car's sitting in the basement now with the equipment removed from it. And, um, so it's, we just need to get rid of it. And, um, so this one will be replaced by the Durango this week. So it's right now, it's got the equipment taken out of it and mostly the equipment out of it. Any of the stuff we're gonna reuse has been taken out of it. We're gonna take the stripes off it and finish taking the equipment out and then we just need to get rid of it. Whether you wanna put it on a, on a sale. I've, I've reached out to Gerard. Uh, they're not gonna do a, a consignment sale again this fall. So putting it on there is an option. That's what we did with our last one. I could put it on Purple Wave or just sell it. You know, put a, do a, a sale here where we would just advertise and take bids.
Now, the last one we surplus, we talked about keeping. And you said the next one coming up was.
Yeah, and then we put another thirty-seven thousand model on it. I would not recommend that. It, it's, it's used up. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put our courthouse employees in that thing to go any farther around town.
Okay.
Wait, these things don't even hold up as good as a manufactured home.
And, yeah, eight years down the road, they're, they're pretty well done.
Alright, so is there a motion to surplus the old patrol car?
So moved or a second.
Alright, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, do you have a preference on how we dispose of it? An online sale? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be doing a sheriff's sale tomorrow on a execution. Initially, I thought, well, why don't we just sell this at the same time? But it hasn't been advertised and, but I, you know, there's nothing saying we couldn't advertise it, put it. And it wouldn't have to be a public notice advertisement in this case, but I think we'd wanna make sure we get the word out, but. Purple Age is probably the easiest way to go.
Yeah.
The city's disposed of their assets that way now. I haven't used them yet, but Gerard's, um, Gerard's are really easy to work with. They're just not doing a sale. In Purple Wave, you get pretty good results on too, don't you?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't used them yet. I've been watching the city stuff and they're getting good results.
Yeah.
Alright.
Just wanted to mention that.
Excellent.
You didn't go yet.
I was just trying to figure out exactly where we were. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Scott, we've got, um, the roof access ladder quote.
Yeah, what I.
Yeah, what I have here, and I, I'm not sure if it's considered a contract that takes your signature or not. So that's one of the reasons I'm here. But I'm sure coming for you guys when I'm coming up on these projects are a little more expensive, I guess. Um, but anyway, uh, what I like to do is put a, uh, access onto this roof of this building. Uh, we'd, we would install it in the, uh, fenced in county yard now. And it would be this access be locked off. So you couldn't just crawl up there anytime you wanted to. Uh, it's just easier access up on the roof. Uh, so we gotta get up there from time to time to check and clean drains. And we have one condensing unit up there that needs to be checked on from time to time, be cleaned also. So uh, anyway, uh, I have a quote here from Boone Brothers to, to install, do the work. Uh, came in a little bit more than I thought it would come in at. Uh, it came in at seven thousand six hundred. I figured it'd be around five, so.
And this is listed as county, uh, four H building. I was trying to figure out where I saw that on there. Is that?
It was.
Oh, yeah?
That was, I, I think it might have been. I, I, I had trouble fi- figuring out what was for what. Yeah.
I like to get one there also, but but then I think I even talked about that in the past, but yeah, and I might have mistyped something in the email to Carrie too. But this, this one is for the safety center here. So.
That's seven five nine five.
Yeah, seven thousand five ninety-five. Yeah. So there's some incidentals they have listed here, line items. I don't see need for any of that stuff. So I think we'll come in at that, but that's what I'd like to do. And like I said, it would take a signature on that to proceed, so. I like to probably do something like that on the four H billion next year. I just never pulled the trigger on that one. So we've talked about so many different roof options and have never come up with what we, if we were gonna pitch it or not. So.
Good budget wise on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have, I have the money figured into it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's the, what's our access to the roof of the courthouse then, right now?
To the courthouse roof?
Is there a roof access?
Yeah, through the attic. Yep.
Well, through the attic.
Yep. Yep, with a brand new set of steps. First thing I had done when I got here. Cause once from nineteen twelve looked a little rickety. But yeah, we have access to that courthouse roof. That's the breeze up there. This one. And the old ladder gets a little hairy from time to time, especially when you gotta swing out over that pair of a wall, so.
And we don't even have to fight off the bats anymore when you go through the attic.
Not usually.
Not routinely.
There's every once in a while, one of the little guys shows up, but not very often. Couple, three times a year.
That's good then.
Every time you don't get bit by a mosquito, think of that, so.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly. The last one was just camped out on the east door upstairs. Just hanging there on the panic bar. So we just hit the handicap button, opened the door and off he went, so.
Those little ones around here can live twenty years. Isn't that crazy?
I think of them as mice, but yeah, they're very different. Anyway, that's what I have, so.
Alright. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Another building improvement. Alright. Sounds good.
Landing sewer, I, okay, I have money in the budget for that, so.
I like the sound of that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, uh, next item on the agenda is adopting the twenty twenty-five provisional budget as the annual budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to adopt the twenty twenty-five provisional budget as our annual budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This leaves us at a what for a percentage? It was sixteen and five.
About sixteen and a half.
Which is a little bit better than last year's projection if I'm rem- remembering. Is that right?
I think it was about the same.
Just about the same.
Yeah.
Alright.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favors, oh, do we need a roll call on this?
No.
No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we now have to approve the twenty twenty-five payroll budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I think our employees are our greatest asset and I have never worked anywhere with a better team and I had all those in favor, say say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, anything on Clay County Park?
Uh, nothing new. Uh, well, we had, I don't have them in front of me, but we did get some, uh, year-to-date numbers from Game Fish and Parks on uh, camping reservations and traffic down there. And we are up again. So, so last year I reported those really dramatic increases, like a hundred and thirty-eight percent. Um, but nothing nearly that dramatic, but it's exciting that that trend is continuing and it wasn't just a whip, so, yeah.
Yeah. That's great. And as a park user, that park looks great. I mean, it's like night and day.
Um, one, one thing that came up at the, at the, uh, recent meeting is that Game Vision Parks is, uh, planning to do some tree removal and tree replanting in the, uh, in the campground area. Um, and I, I noted to the, uh, to the rest of the park board that uh, prior to cutting anything down, we need to make sure that we explain, uh, to the community why we're doing that. So, uh, here's, here's a beginning. Uh, so, so certainly some of the, some of the cottonwoods are, um, are shedding some, a lot of branches and, uh, can be a hazard uh, to campers and their vehicles and, uh, to our campground facilities and our hosts. So, uh, so the, the any thinning that it takes place out there is purely for safety reasons. And, uh, there are plans in place to replace, uh, for the state to purchase additional trees to replace some of the ones that, uh, that are, that, that will be cut down at some point. So I'm not sure the timeline on that, but I did wanna make sure that, uh, that nobody was surprised. Uh, and I also communicated to, uh, to, to Shane Birch with Game Vision Parks that, um, that I think our constituents would be very upset if they showed up out there and it looked like a clear cut. So make sure that they're judicious in their, in their trimming. And he assured me that they would be, so, you know.
Are they, are they gonna mess with that cot- that huge old cottonwood down by the bench on the river?
No, this is just, uh, just in the campground area. You know, we've got, I, I think a lot of people like me really appreciate the, the, the stand of cottonwoods down there. I've had a lot of beautiful days just looking up at the leaves shimmering up there. And I, I know that if, if a lot of those went, people, people would probably, uh, have a lot of concerns about that, so.
I think there would be an insurrection.
That's, that's a pitchforky move though. Yeah, don't do that.
Uh, oh, alright, um, building project?
Uh, executive session.
Okay. Um, joint jurisdiction?
No, we had our, uh, joint meeting last night just to approve the, uh, rezoning of the property north of fifteen, west of nineteen. Uh, we'll, we'll have another listening meeting for the comprehensive plan coming up. I don't recall exactly when that is off the top of my head. It'll be coming along, so we're moving along.
Great.
I don't know if you've had a chance to look, any of you who've had a chance to look at the comprehensive plan proposed at this point, but, uh, I'd encourage you to have a look and give us input if you had some.
Yeah, it looks good.
I really appreciated the public comment hearings you guys had and, uh, the, um, representative from CCO did a really good job, I think, feeling questions and, uh, and helping clarify some things for people, so.
Any other commissioner reports? Um.
Um, I'm, I'll just share, you know, coming, uh, so, so from the state convention, it was a good convention. Um, we did unanimously, so the state association and county commissioners um, voted unanimously to increase our dues. So I think that you guys, I think they sent those around previously, the, the requested dues increases. Um, there have been no changes in the dues since twenty seventeen, so it just gives time in order to get the advocacy that we need, uh, as a county. Um, and we also passed, uh, unanimously, um, uh, a couple of, uh, 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 proposed bills for the legislature and then a set of policy, um, proposals as well. Uh, and those, I realized that I only have a paper copy of those, so I'll request a, a digital copy so that I can send those around to everybody and they can see what, uh, what our, our convention is um, is supporting. But I certainly had no issues with them, nor did any other commissioner in the state. So, so I think, uh, I think it was a good, good set of policy proposals, so, yeah.
Great. Um, okay, executive session?
Is John, John or Cory, do you? Are they here for something?
I have a time for public hearing, I was.
Regarding?
The four, six, nine, two, five, I don't have any.
Drew re-advertised that one. Um, there was an error in the legal description, so he was gonna re-advertise that.
And he obviously never contacted you.
Well, I.
Well, our apologies. Yeah. That was a, that was a, an error.
Do we know when it is then?
We don't.
Do you want me to?
I'm so sorry. You guys ended up spending that much time here. Yeah.
We have to reschedule then.
I didn't even know it was scheduled. I
I didn't see it on the.
It wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't. Yeah.
Wasn't on any of our radar. I apologize. Yeah.
We didn't put it on the agenda because we knew that it needed to be re-advertised.
So sorry.
Wow.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, have a good day.
Alright, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. I don't think so. Well, I mean, you can talk about the building if you want. You wanna sit down on that part?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, is there a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second to go into executive session for contractual purposes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business?
Oh, I just, we need to, we've got a couple more properties in O'Conde we need to get rid of that the county owns.
She put them.
What's that?
Put them on that.
Agenda for next week to discuss.
Okay.
Are they also just weird little pieces or?
Yeah, one's ten feet wide by twenty feet long. So Michael's got the process that we have to go through. Well, the one, the one needs to go to the pit. Their propane tank already sits on it. So, and it's worth, or we have it valued at twenty-seven dollars. But there's a statute that describes how we go through that. I think I think Dick and Betty were part of the last ones we did.
Yeah.
One property, I mean, that one that the pits, that the propane tank sits on, we can sell that. The other one, we have to figure out figure out a value. And maybe when they already have a value, but normally you appoint three taxpayers in the county to a board to, to do it, to figure out what the cost is.
Okay.
And if it's under five hundred dollars, you can sell it to somebody. If it's under over five hundred, then it goes to public auction.
Okay, alright.
Or you can, you can go to public auction either way too.
That one where you have to stand on the s- steps of the courthouse and?
Andy does.
Andy does.
Yeah, I think last time we had Andy do it. I think it says usually the auditor does it.
I thought I remember that, cause we were looking at that.
Yeah, he's good at it. No sense in trading another person.
Right.
I think he deferred that to me once.
So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.